Okay, thank you Frank, Cable Access. Good evening, everybody, welcome to Foxborough's first 2016 Board of Selectmen meeting. Today's January 12th, I'll go through the agenda. At seven o'clock, we always have citizens' input and anything that's not reasonably anticipated in the last several days. At 7:05, Selectmen's Update. At 7:15, we have Saga Hibachi Steakhouse for two items. One is to update, to provide an update and a report on the new procedures concerning the recent alcohol violations. And the second item is a discussion and action related to the penalty that we imposed at the last meeting. At 7:40, we have a discussion with Assistant Town Manager Mary Beth Bernard in the Board on Discussion and a Vote on the Foxborough Highway and Water Employee Union Contract. At 7:50 and at 7:55, we have, I'm sorry, 7:50, we have the Special Town Warrant Review and any changes in discussion. 7:55 and 8:05, we have the Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager Updates. At 8:15, Mary Beth Bernard, the Assistant Town Manager, will re-present the Board the Vehicle Use Policy in anticipation of a vote. At 8:25, Mary Beth Bernard and Chief O'Leary is going to re-present to us the Constable Policy, and I think we're ready to vote on that. At 8:35, we're going to go into Executive Session simply to approve the December 15th and the December 29th, 2015 Executive Session Minutes. And then in between, we have a dozen or so action items. So, Mary Beth, could you lead us in the Fudge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone here for citizens' input? If you could just come to the microphone and introduce yourself, your name and address for the record.
Okay, yes, my name is Graham Silman. I am the owner of Tavallino at 274 Patriot Place. We are a member of Fox Cares. I want to address a hope about your impact as our town's licensing authority. In looking at the redevelopment of shopping plazas in town, for example, at recent meetings, you have shown an interest in shaping and cultivating the town's economic livelihood. In your role as a licensing authority, I urge you to also consider that broader interest and not just be a punitive body. That has some relevance for things you're looking at tonight, and I'll broaden it a little bit. You know that late-ending concerts and games create a time squeeze to serve guests before the usual closing times. If you agree that the restaurants at Patriot Place are a useful tool for crowd and traffic control after events, for these late situations, do you have a responsibility to develop a proactive policy? For example, extending closing times could be a standard checklist item that you have when you approve late-ending event licenses. If Patriot Place licenses had been extended one hour on January 3rd, what violations would the police have found at Saga? Or would they have seen an okay operation? Okay? As for the license holder you're looking at tonight, Saga, they're a small business with few resources, very little wealth. Depending on your decision tonight about holding their penalties and abeyance, they're already looking at, can we go to court? Do we go to court? They have expenses, okay? And that stretches them. Again, they're a small business, they are not a large operation. Your actions have been 100% punitive so far. If, in addition to that night's violations, however, you look at the bigger picture of what that restaurant does every day and what its role is in the town and in the place that it is, a Patriot Place, you could see this business as a perfect fit for the town and for Patriot Place. By their deliberate design of the allocation of seats between the dining room and the bar, their menu, their price points, and the style of service, this is an operation that opens its doors every day as the kind of restaurant that you should want. Under the radar every day, you're not looking at them, they are not before you, they are not in the police blotter. Please consider that with these guys. We watch Saga from across the street from where we are. For me, the biggest concern I can see is maybe they're a little bit unsophisticated and they may encounter some language barriers. As a restaurant owner, I mean, the type of thing I think of is, are they getting the best deal from their suppliers? I mean, it's a broader issue, but, you know, they have regular business struggles and at the same time, I, you know, I worry that this sets them up for some mistakes. We've begun to work with them a little bit, and I can also say that we see that they care, they learn, they're serious about running a good business and being a responsible licensing holder. I guess what I would say to you then is, are you willing to nurture that? Do you want to cultivate that? You've talked about cultivating economic development in town in a broader sense with other issues. Dealing with a small business owner who's not a native speaker is different from dealing with corporate, faceless, national chains. However, if you want authentic, local Asian food, you might want to find a local Asian to help produce it. It might be desirable. Again, the question for you guys is, are you interested in cultivating that in the business mix? Let's boil this down finally to a very specific action item tonight. Saga has already announced that they're going to appeal your decision. I have no other information about this, I read about it in the Reporter. There is in this country a constitutional respect for due process. You guys know that appeals can change your decisions, including changes to penalties, and knowing this may happen, I ask you to hold the remaining penalty and abeyance for Saga until they and the town have completed the appeal. Other towns do this in Massachusetts, it's only fair. And not doing it is just being a bully. We are also other license holders, we are small businesses, we watch what you guys do. Please consider this in the broadest possible terms. You have to enforce the laws, we respect that. You have to enforce the regulations. You also have a role in setting what the broader regulations are so that things operate efficiently in your town, so that it's possible and easy for people to stay within the rules and still do the right things and the best things for the town in each of their operations. Please consider that broader role, and more specifically tonight, think about the impact you have on that business and the respect for due process. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Very well said. For the record, with the exception of being a bully, I think I agree with everything that was said. So, and actually, if you want to wait around, the item is on the agenda?
I have to go back to the restaurant.
Okay. Had you stayed, you'd be welcome to participate.
Might be somebody else.
Yeah, might be somebody else. All right, just on a quick update, being one to three inches expected tonight, just to remind everybody, there is a parking van, in effect. If you go to the town website, it shows there. I think it's from 1:00 AM to 6:00 AM, so the town is in its right to ticket or tow. And if it's a really nice car, we get to keep it. The other items, if you notice in the packet and some discussion back and forth to get it on the agenda, we get a meeting Thursday night, and that is for Judy's Flowers to come in, Mark and Judy, on the municipal conversion. What that is, is when a town is auctioned, properties auctions are sold, this provision allows them, or requires them, to come in front of the Selectmen to share their ideas of redevelopment, or development, or nothing. And then you have a say in that. So they'll be here Thursday at this room at 6:30. And then we're also scheduled, we schedule all the meetings with the Advisory Committee now, so thank you for all of you guys who go to those meetings as well. Each week or each meeting, we put on the Town Meeting Warrant Items for Discussion, and I wanted to just run through them quick at the beginning as a summary because the meeting's coming up in February, and I think the more people understand it and come in and talk about it and participate, the better. So there's eight articles. The meeting's on February 23rd, it runs a couple hours, and it'd be great to see some of the new people there in town and some of the, for the most part, it's been 100, 130, 150 people maybe that come. But there's a lot of work that goes in this all year round, so I'm going to go through the eight articles quick. The first one is the Home Rule Petition, where it's, we're asking for two things for the child abuse training sessions. One is to add mandated reporters to the list of people in town. Basically, people required in their profession or their job, if they see something, they're mandated to report it. And then also, on Article One, is to require training. We have a group in town that provides a training under the state law. It just says training, and there's no provisions on when, how, where to do it. So those two items is added mandated reporters and provision for training. Article Two, we're asking the state through the town to provide two additional liquor licenses in town. Article Three is what we've termed the United Steel Workers AFL-CIO Union, which is the Middle Managers, Department Heads, and Clerical Employees Contract for the year 2015 and 2016. Article Four is the Police Contract for 2016 and 2017 that's been negotiated and will be on the warrant article. Article Five is the Board and Library Employee Contract for 2016 and 2017. Article Six is interesting because it's removal of the Police Chief from the Civil Service. Back in 1931, it got enacted in town, and the town, through its discussions and process, decided that now's the time to remove the Civil Service from that. So that'll be an article to be voted on in February. Article Seven is a Water Main that's coming from Main Street up to Lakeview Pavilion, and that's sponsored, I think, through the CIP or the Water Department.
Water Commission.
Yep, Water Commission. And then Article Eight is the one that a lot of people have been working on, that's the new Town Hall and demolition of the old Town Hall. So again, it's only a couple hours, February 23rd, it'd be nice to have a robust group there to go on this, and this is kind of what the town is all about, the rules and the process that we follow. So that's it for Selectmen's Update, unless there's anyone else that wants to add anything? Okay. 7:15, this isn't a public hearing, we can go a minute or so early, so if representatives from the Saga Hibachi Steakhouse want to come up? So on this one, this is a little bit of an anomaly, and I'm just going to give a little bit of a background. The first item that Saga is here to discuss, going back, on November 24th, there was a alleged violation for serving, or for, I think there was three, four of them, that not clearing the tables, et cetera, were familiar with that. We had a hearing on the 29th, on December, in imposed penalties. On December 31st, that letter was sent by certified mail out to Hibachi Saga. And then we received a letter on January 6th that says there is going to be an appeal on the 10-day suspension. An appeal stated it was arbitrary and capricious, not the decision to find them at fault, but the penalty, as we had earlier, heard earlier, it was a 10-day, going from January 8th to January 17th. So we're right now halfway through it, there, I think five days into it.
Five days in.
Yeah, so when Attorney Stope had sent the letter, it would have required this Board to have a special meeting at the tail end of last week. And I talked to Town Manager Bill Keegan, and I think we decided that we would put it on the agenda tonight to decide halfway through the merits of that. So the two things that we want to talk, I want, we intentionally put the first item to see what provisions, if any, that they've come up with to make changes so this doesn't happen again. And then the second one, because it's under appeal, I just want to caution the Board that, not knowing where it's going to go, I do not want to revisit the items of discussion. When this Board makes a decision, I'm assuming that the person on the other side of the table put their best foot forward, made their presentation. We did it in a unified way, and we did our homework, and we made the decision. I don't like when people come up and try for a second pass at it, but on this particular one, where it's a respected business and a respected attorney, I thought it would be worth discussing if this is something that, if they have something new, or some background or history that they wanted to share, to sway us to maybe reconsider. If we do want to reconsider, we follow the Robert Rules of Order. We would have to go back in and not rescind the motion, but amend something that was already approved. Because this wasn't, the way that the Robert Rules of Order plays out is to avoid having to revote things or the opportunity every meeting. If this was brought up at the last meeting, say we were going to revote it and we participated tonight, then we would need a majority vote. But because it wasn't brought up, this is the first time we're discussing, under the Robert Rules of Order, we would need a two-thirds vote. So that would mean two-thirds of the five people. David did not participate last time, but he informed me that he did go back and look at all the tapes. He looked at the tape, read the meeting minutes, so he's certifying that it's a, it will be a five-person vote. Correct me if I'm wrong, you're regular to vote, so.
Mr. Chairman, Council has advised that he can certainly vote on that.
He can, okay, all right. So two-thirds out of the five means four out of five have to vote to revote this. All right, so just so you understand that. So that second part, we can talk about again after the first part of their presentation. I just thought it was important for everyone to kind of understand the history and where we're going with this. So having said that, welcome.
Thank you.
If you could just introduce yourself for the record.
Sure, Mark Stope, on behalf of Saga Hibachi Steakhouse, I'm joined by Annie Chen and Stephen Lynn.
Welcome.
They are the managers of the restaurant. Mr. Lynn is the liquor license manager. Annie Chen runs the restaurant side and does most of the day-to-day activities at the restaurant. They were both here the last time that we were here. They didn't come up and join me at the table because it was kind of crowded at the table at the time. But thank you for that introduction of where we are, what we're doing, and so forth, and since we have number one and number two, we'll start with number one. As I had indicated at the time of the hearing, even before there was a notice of violation, Saga Hibachi Steakhouse investigated the circumstances thoroughly and took action even without having been told to do so. And just to remind you of what they did at that time, they had fixed the cash register timing, which had gone out because of a power failure. They moved the last call for drinks from 12:40 to 12:30, just to give themselves a 10-minute buffer. And again, I know it doesn't necessarily need to be reminded, but this was an entirely unusual set of circumstances that happened that night with the game running so late, and it caught them off-guard, and everything that happened kind of just became an innocent mistake that just snowballed. But that having been said, they decided that, just generally speaking, they'll move it to 12:30. That way, they don't ever encounter that problem again, or at least they buy themselves another 10 minutes or so of time to be able to react to exigent circumstances. And lastly, on that evening, I indicated to you that they had already gone through retraining with all of the personnel in the restaurant to remind them what their obligation was regarding closing procedures and the timeliness of it. Since that meeting, they've continued to make improvements to how they operate their business. They've reduced those closing procedures to writing, as well as some of the other important aspects of managing a liquor license in a restaurant bar. And again, emphasized, because they put it in writing and presented it to their employees, again, as part of a secondary retraining, they thought that that would have more emphasis because they could actually see what was being said to them. So they've, again, reviewed that in completion. They've also now become part of Fox Cares, which is why the gentleman from Tavallino's was here, I suspect, and are fully involved with that activity, and look forward to participating there. And has, as was indicated during the Public Input Segment, their, Saga Hibachi Steakhouse is a valuable asset to the community. It employs people, it entertains people, it feeds them, and I would also implore you to try to help nurture that relationship. It is, they don't want to be in an adverse position with the town. It makes them uncomfortable. They don't want to be having to do battle on issues. There was no way that they expected to be caught in the middle of those circumstances that evening. They're embarrassed to have to go through this process. It is very costly to them to have to go through this process. They've now been out without their liquor license for five days. And just so you can have an appreciation of what the net effect of that is to them, again, a small business with not big margins, they've lost at a minimum of $21,000 in the last five days, including tonight, as a result of having had to return their liquor license. It was not an easy decision for them, from a financial perspective, to decide to appeal, but they felt that they had to. And again, they don't want to be in that position. They don't want to be adverse to the town, they want to cooperate, participate, and be part of the community. But we filed an appeal. The second part of what you had indicated is, we're asking that this Board stay the balance of the punishment so that we have an opportunity to appeal this matter to the ABCC. As reasonable businesspeople, you can appreciate that sometimes we'll have differing opinions as to what's appropriate in the set of circumstances. I think with our system of justice, to have, you have the power to hear the facts, decide what the penalty is, and also virtually decide what the appeal is. Because of, because you impose the penalty in a quick fashion, you eliminate the possibility of an effective appeal with the ABCC, because most of the traveling public who deals with these kinds of things knows, it will take them at a minimum five to six weeks to get to it, and they're usually busier than that, and it takes sometimes two to three months to have the issue heard. So there is that sense of fairness that goes along with that. And not the least of which is, you have in fact exacted a very, very serious penalty on the Saga Hibachi Steakhouse with the five days of closure, the impact on their business from the regular public knowing what has happened there, and the actual financial dollars lost, as I had indicated. Clearly, after the notice of appeal was filed, one of the considerations that we had was, and we kind of suspected that there wouldn't be time nor interest to call an emergency meeting just to deal with the issue of staying the punishment. The other alternative at that time would have been to go to court. And I worked with the council for this Board and the town, and we had made arrangements where I would let them know what court we were going to, what judge was going to be assigned, and we had intended to be there that next day. We decided not to do that for multiple reasons. One, huge cost. But also, it would have been huge cost to the town. My clients didn't want to do that to the town, again, harkening back to the whole cooperation being part of the community aspect. As indicated in the appeal documents that I filed with the ABCC, we weren't taking issue with the fact that they had the violations. There's no question that those tables weren't cleared, and the bar wasn't properly cleared in time. No question that happened. So they were willing to step up and say, you know, yeah, we deserve to be punished for that. It was a mistake, it was an honest mistake, or an innocent mistake, but a mistake nonetheless, they have an obligation, and they understand that obligation. So they decided that they wouldn't do that, and they would wait for this Board to hear what we had to say this evening. So we are before you on that issue, whether you will stay the balance of the punishment or take some other action in hopes that we might be able to resolve this.
Okay. A quick, I guess I put it in the category of clerical. Should this go forward to the courts? What's the duration to bring it from appeal through decision of the court process? Are we talking weeks or months?
Oh, no. If we are caused to have to go to the courthouse, it would be done on an emergency basis. Everything would get filed tomorrow morning. I would file a, what's called?
I don't know, it may be a misunderstanding, I wasn't clear. If, if there's a stay.
Right.
Okay? To get through the court process, not, not under the emergency situation.
Okay, let me be a little clearer. There would be two aspects to it. The court process would only come into play if you decided that you did not wish to stay the balance of the punishment. We would then use the Superior Court to try to get a judge to order on an emergency basis that the punishment be stayed.
Okay.
That would give us an opportunity to go through the balance of the process with the ABCC. How long that process is? They tell you you get a hearing within five to six weeks. I don't think so. I think it's probably two months. But I would say that we're, it's probably fair to say that three months is the outer limit on them taking a decision and coming back to the town. Again, because it's an appeal, the town would be involved with that, that appeal as well.
Okay. Thank you. This isn't a public hearing, so this is just an agenda item, so any, any questions from the Board or discussion items from the Board?
Yeah, just one, Mark. Your clients, you know, they owned up to the violations.
Yes.
Which was nice. The Board, you know, we assess the penalty within our guidelines. Can you tell me where we were, you think we were, arbitrary and capricious?
As I tried to touch on that evening, and obviously, there were a lot of things going on, and I had a lot to say about too many, probably too many issues. I think it's, it involves not just this situation, but also the one the year prior, where there was a shift in how this Board decided it was, at least, again, these are just my observations, a shift in how this Board decided it was going to handle liquor violations in town. And I've been to more than a few of the meetings where those violations have come up. I've represented more, a couple of few liquor license holders in response to violations received from the Board. And my observation in November of 2014 was that there was a distinctive difference then, where this client, who I represented at that meeting, was given a penalty very different from several other liquor license holders just the year before. And it went from a mere letter in the file to my clients being suspended for the maximum amount. Now, I've been doing the practice of law for 31 years, if I could just finish the thought.
Okay, sure.
31 years, and judges oftentimes have ranges of possibilities for what they can do in criminal cases and civil cases or whatever. And my view is that, and I think my client's view is that there has to be some recognition of the, what actions led to it. If they had come in here, they were a poor community member, they were thumbing their nose at the Board, they were being rude, they weren't, they weren't, they weren't making an effort to be a good citizen, I could see amping up the punishment to whatever the maximum is. But I, but I think, you know, in the November 2014 issue, I reminded this Board that this, the quote-unquote sting operations that the Police Department runs, by the very words of the ABCC, are intended to be teaching tools for liquor license holders in town, not gotchas so that the town can just put the hammer down on somebody. And I think if we were to look at it from that perspective, it is a very good tool. It can show where there are potential weaknesses, okay? It was, it was a sting, it was a setup, and it showed a weakness. So that's good, the liquor license holder, then a fairly new business in town, learn from the experience, make changes so that it doesn't happen again. I think that was the intention of the ABCC and the Police Department in coming up with that kind of a plan. Very similarly, in the present circumstances, it was a bizarre set of facts that just kind of spun out of control that resulted in them violating. And I assure you, while there are suspicions on your side of the table as to whether or not it was a purposeful act on their part, I've gotten to know these folks. There is no way in the world there was anything purposeful that night. I'm telling you, before you even sent a notice, they were already calling me, saying, we don't even understand what happened, this is what we've sorted out so far, what should we do? And we started talking about it even before, before the notice of violation came out. So bringing it full round to your, to specifically answering your question, I think when a Board just all of a sudden hammers the fullest extent of the punishment they can, without, in my view, in my client's view, taking proper understanding of the set of circumstances, I think that that's what becomes arbitrary and capricious. And I would hope that the ABCC would see it our way and say, you have to leave some room here. You have, there are ranges of behavior, therefore, and there are ranges of punishments that go along with that.
Going back to the sting operation, we, the Board took a look at that and found that the, the young man that they used as an operative was so appallingly young-looking that, that's why we went to the three days for everyone. We have to, we have to act as judge and jury in a lot of respects to find out, you know, what was the extent of the violation. And in that particular case, it was, you know, there was nobody at the switch. In this particular case, you know, and it was awfully nice to say, yeah, we're owning up to it, that was to their credit. But the thing is, had the police officer not been called, you know, you have to wonder, how long would it have continued? And that's, and I'll quote Ginny, our names are on the license as well. We're responsible to the community for making- We're responsible to the community for making sure that the license and the rules and regulations surrounding that license are upheld." And I know that you've said before that, you know, these should be a teaching moment. How long do we have to teach?
Well, and see, actually, that goes to perhaps another point that I should have made. Had there been a repeat of a specific violation previously and have it come in the second time, I could understand putting the hammer down more so in that circumstance. It's why when I opened my remarks at the time of the public hearing, I said, "This is very different from what happened previously." Not related at all, except that it is a liquor license holder and they have an obligation, but it's very, a very, very different set of circumstances. They repaired, if you will, the problem with their operations with regard to the sting because we haven't had any issues with regard to that since then, but now we're presented with this bizarre set of circumstances. And I'll just hearken back to November of 2014 because there was something else that this board had said that, that kind of struck with, struck me and has stayed with me. And I can totally appreciate, there was a level of frustration that was palpable that was coming from the board with regard to either increasing or a level of hits on these sting operations. It almost seemed like the liquor license holders weren't learning a lesson. And to that, to that extent, I can understand that frustration, but with all due respect, I don't think the frustration with people who had failed the process previously should have resulted in a punishment that hurt these folks because they weren't part of that process. And again, that's why I think that there are ranges of penalties, and if somebody's repeating the same violation multiple times, I think that's what that range, and then the upper end of the range is intended for. Again, just my view, but having been before a lot of administrative boards and a lot of courts and so forth, that's the way I think most of the world views that. And I would, I would ask that you folks do that.
But our regulations don't say that.
Well, they don't say that specifically, but what they do is they give you discretion.
Of course, of course.
Okay. So that's where your discretion and the concept of arbitrary and capricious comes into play. And there's, that's, there's a crossroads to that, where there's discretion on your side if the facts and circumstances to a reasonable person suggest that it's egregious enough that you should go to the worst of the penalties, then of course, that's reasonable. If however, the circumstances, and again, I would implore you to accept my version of this, but if the circumstances are such that it's not that egregious and you have a range of penalties, then somewhere in between is probably an appropriate place to be. And again, I don't sit on your side of the table, so I'm not going to tell you how to do your business. It's my observations, and I'm representing a client here, but I would like to think that if I were on that side of the table and I were judging someone, something in that regard, that I would be able to understand that fairness aspect.
But I would say that, you know, arbitrary and capricious are acting outside of our authority and outside of our guidelines.
No. No, that's, that's not specifically, that's a term of art, if you will, in the legal world for purposes of an appeal on decisions like this. Arbitrator and capricious are the buzzwords that the A B C C knows to see, that suggests to them, what were the circumstances? Does the circumstances warrant that kind of a punishment? And that's really what the arbitrary and capricious, in respect to the way I wrote it, the way I intend it, my clients intend it, and I think the A B C C intends to read it, is that circumstances, does the punishment, do those circumstances warrant that level of punishment? And that's kind of where it lies. So I wouldn't, I would ask you to not take any personal offense to those words because it's not meant to suggest you operated outside of the realm of what was appropriate.
My view and your view, we completely disagree. But I think I've got a clearer perspective on it. Thank you. Thanks.
Other members of the board?
Yeah, I'd just like to touch on a couple of things that you mentioned. Yes, sir. One, in relation to November 2014, the board's changed. Okay? So people bring different views. I think one of the alarming things was the sheer number of violations, and I think that was a wake-up call to a lot of us, that we need to act. And maybe not send a message, but act within the guidelines of our regulations. And you talk about teaching moments, you can learn from the mistakes of others. I think one of the positives that came out of all that was the recreation of Fox Cares. They do a great job. They really do. See Vic in the back, and he's, he's a member, he's been one of the original members, but, you know, if you participated in Fox Cares, some of these things you would have been alerted to. They invite the A B C C in. They do, they did a presentation on fake IDs. They talk about best practices. They talk about some of the problems that they have with staff. It's, it's, they do, they do really good work. And, you know, yeah, some bad things happened. This is one of the positives that came out of it, and I'm glad that you're, you're going to be a member of Fox Cares going forward. And listen, I understand you're contrite and you're, you understand the mistake, but, you know, we have rules and regulations that we need to, we need to uphold, and we need to be clear that, you know, public safety comes first. Liquor licenses are a privilege, they're not a right. And when there's violations, we're going to act accordingly. We hope, we don't want to do this, believe me. We want, we want to support our local businesses, but when there's mistakes, they have to be accountable for those mistakes, and they have to be responsible for them.
Yeah, I understand that. And just kind of following your, what you had to say about what happened in 2014 and the board changing its perspective on that, I'll share with you what I, what I suggested that evening. So I appreciate the fact that there was frustration with the board. I live in town, my business is in town, I've been here a long, more than a little bit of time. And I share with you that same frustration because we don't want to see those problems come up. We'd like to think that people learn. The thing, the point of that, though, with regard to my clients that evening back in 2014 was, I think it's, again, just my opinion, but I think it's a better perspective to come out after a volley of these things where you've treated the business owners the way you have treated others in the past, to close that, do whatever it was you were going to do, and then look in the camera and collectively say, "From this point forward, men and women, boys and girls, we're going to do the following. No longer will there be a letter of reprimand in your file, but you will in fact, if you fail one of these sting operation," and I apologize, I forget the actual term for those, but we all know what I'm talking about. "If you don't, if you fail one of these sting operations, you will in fact be suspended for three days. That is what this board is going to do from this point forward." I thought in 2014 that that would have been the more appropriate thing to do. And I'm a little disappointed that we didn't have an opportunity to appeal that one to the A B C C because I think that they would have shared in that, that perspective. Didn't work that way, here we are, it's 2016. But I think it's important to understand how we got to where we are today, some of the things that have transpired in between, and maybe that makes life easier for you folks and how you'd conduct your business.
See, I think the way we get the message, ours, through our, our rules and regulations that go along with each license on the, on the renewal each year. That's how we get our message. It's, our punishment is defined. You know, looking into the camera, like you said, how many people really watch? How many, how many, how many license holders are really sitting, watching this meeting?
Yeah, but if you say it, it gets reported, they pay attention, and I pay attention. And I represent not just them, but I represent other liquor license holders. And at that point, I can have a conversation, and I would, if I, if you folks had said something like that, and I had read it, saw it, heard it, I would have then contacted, my clients will hold liquor licenses in town, and I would have scheduled some time with them to say, "Okay, there's, there's a game change here. We, no one ever intends to violate the rules, but you need to understand that the penalty for doing that has just been amped up. So whatever you were doing before, if it's important to you, if money's important and continuing to be able to operate your business is important, then you need to revisit these issues and make sure it doesn't happen." In my world, that's exactly what would have happened. So what you say from here, even though there's not a lot of people here, and I don't know how many people watch you on, on the television or watch it on the tapes or whatever, the word gets out, and particularly to the business owners, and particularly through Fox Cares, everyone would know.
Right. Through, through Fox Cares, and I don't, I don't want to have this go back and forth because, because there's no point in that. I think, I think everybody knows where this is headed. But Fox Cares, Fox Cares reached out to your client in November of 2014. They never got back to him. They reached out on two or three other occasions, and it was, "We're not interested," or there was, there was no desire to join. Now, all of a sudden, there's a desire to join. And I get it. You know, they don't know what it's all about, and they have their own, own businesses to tend to, and it's, it's a commitment, you know, a meeting, a quarter, and some dues and everything else. But it's, it's sharing best practices with other license holders, other license holders that have been through exactly what they're going through. So it would have been to their benefit back in November of 2014. And had they taken that opportunity, they might not be sitting here today.
You may very well be right, but we can't go back and undo history. We're here today. One of the things I'll, I'll remind you, because I have had a conversation about this with my clients, is that, you know, they're the Saga Hibachi Steakhouse, but that's just a building and a, and a sign. It's people. And, and we discussed the numbers of life-related issues that had come up in between that kind of present, prevented them from doing all the things that they should have done maybe with regard to that. There is in fact some cultural and language, language barriers that have gotten in the way with some of this. And, and now that they are involved with Fox Care, maybe, and those folks understand that there are some of those limitations as well, and they were, they have in, in 2014, a fairly new business, we're trying to make it work. You don't just open a restaurant and say, "Yay, we're making lots of money." It's a lot of hard work, and it's, as anybody else here knows who has had a business, it, it's relentless. So not by way of excuse, but by way of understanding, I think they kind of knew that that's something they should have been doing. There just wasn't time in life to, to get that done. I won't go into some, any of the details, but it sounded semi-reasonable to me that, why they hadn't had an opportunity, but I think in large part because of what this board had to say, and perhaps some of the things that I had to say afterwards, they understand that that's, that has to be a priority item because this is an important piece of their business to have a liquor license and to be able to operate that responsibly and protect it. Because irrespective of it being a, a privilege, it's also a valuable asset, and they don't want to waste that.
Now we've moved into the next agenda item, so I'm going to step it up a little bit. Chris and Ginny, any additional comments on this?
Well, my comment is everyone who applies for a liquor license in the town of Fox Care is given rules and regulations that they have to read, understand, and obey. And we have with 47, 49 other establishments that have liquor licenses. We don't get people here all the time before us. We only get the people who violate those rules and regulations, and that's why you're here. And I feel very comfortable that the decision made by the boss selectmen at the last meeting in regard to this violation was a very fair one, and I don't believe that the A B C C will find that it was not fair. That's just my comment.
Chris, any comments?
One quick thing, Mark. You had mentioned that right after the December 29th hearing, you were thinking about immediately appealing, but then you didn't want to. And then I heard a little while later, "If we decide tonight not to change anything, you are going to appeal tomorrow morning."
Well, if you, if you don't change anything, I'm, I'm left without any other options except to go to a Superior Court judge and ask for that judge to stay the punishment so that we have an opportunity to be heard at the A B C C.
What happens in the case of an appeal if, actually, I'm not even going to ask the question because it doesn't matter, but I'm just saying, like, what if the A B C C found us that the punishment was too hard? They've already served five, tomorrow will be six days. By the time something hears, you could have already served eight days of a suspension. So what, what happens if they say, "We only should have given you a five-day suspension"? What happens?
Well, that, that's the downside of us waiting. But, but again, we chose to wait because they don't want to be at issue with the town, they don't want to be costing the town expenses in the form of legal fees and so forth. They just, they just want to do business, and they want to be treated fairly. And that's why, that's why we didn't do that then, but, but we're at a point now where we wanted to come back and have this conversation so that perhaps the board could either reconsider how it wants to handle their punishment or at least stay the punishment so we have an opportunity to flush it out. Because, you know, I respect all of your opinions, and hopefully you respect mine, and who knows who's right? I think I am, you think you are? Okay, so we'll let somebody else call it. And that's what, that's what the system is set up to do. It's just when, when this punishment got, came out so quickly, it didn't leave room for that, if you will.
Yeah. I mean, I personally, I'm not going to change my mind, we were within our guidelines. It was four violations. So, and everybody knows our guidelines when they, every year sign that license, they see what the possible penalty could be. So-
But if I may just say one thing about, yes, there were four written violations, but they were just four ways of saying the same thing. You didn't clear the tables and time, get the people out.
You know, if you're driving and you hit somebody and you cross the lines and it's-
Right. It's the same thing. It's one incident, but it gets identified four ways. I appreciate that.
Any other comments? All right, so we're at the crossroads now. If there wants to be consideration for an amendment to something that was previously adopted, someone would have to, one, make a motion, two, it would have to be seconded. Once it's seconded, we'd have discussion and would vote on it. And in order for that motion to pass, we would need four out of the five selectmen to vote in the affirmative. And if that motion was to, and just to be clear, it's not to reduce the number of days, it's to take the remaining days and put it off to a period to be determined to let the appeal process play through the court system. Everyone understand that? So do I hear a motion in the affirmative?
I'll make a motion to, let's see, hold the remaining penalty in abeyance until which time the Saga Steakhouse has had a chance to appeal through the A B C C.
Okay, motion made. Do we hear a second on that motion? Asking once, asking twice, asking three times, not seeing a motion, the motion fails to move forward. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you. These are never easy, never easy decisions to make. Next item, we're a few minutes behind, but Mary Beth, you wanted to bring forward the Foxborough Highway and Water Employee Union contract for discussion?
What you have in your packet tonight is basically a consolidation of the previous contract and memo of agreement that you've seen before. So this memorandum of agreement covers July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2016. It was ratified by the union and came to this board and was approved on March 3 of 2015. It was funded at annual town meeting. So what you're seeing in front of you is just, we had brought you a memorandum of agreement, and this is a consolidation, taking the old contract and the memorandum of agreement. The previous contract preceded both Bill and myself, so you've already ratified the terms of it as of last March 2013. You've, the union ratified, you approved it, and it was funded at town meeting. But we're starting contract negotiations again with this group, and everybody wanted a consolidated document. So this incorporates the memorandum of agreement that town meeting and you have already agreed to. We're beginning our FY17 negotiations. We wanted a clean, consolidated document. Both parties have reviewed this, as well as town. Counsel has looked at it, and we just wanted a clean, for our record books, consolidated document. So that's what you have in front of you. Happy to say we've started negotiations. We're well into, I think we have our third session coming up, and this is sort of the template for our next set of negotiations.
So is there anything that's highlighted in here that's different from last time we saw it? Is it just the consolidation?
No. What happens, it incorporates the old contract, the memorandum of agreement, any side letters of agreements, where everything is now up to date in this document, and we're starting our negotiations with it.
So this was presented, presented back to the board more as an FYI at this point?
Yeah. We wanted your, we wanted to tell you why we asked you to sign it.
Okay.
So, as you can see, the union has signed it, Bill has signed it.
There's been no officially no changes.
There's no changes. It's just a consolidation, but we appreciate your attention to it. We know you had a thick packet this time.
Okay. Comments, questions, concerns from the board? Okay, comments, questions, concerns from the board?
I would just say, next time, check the numbering on the bottom of the pages. It's very confusing. Goes from two to five to four to seven.
It's flipped.
Ah, there you go.
I commend you for double signing. I think if Chris just flips his paper, he'll figure it out. Flipping.
No, I agree.
He just has to find something.
Leave the numbers off.
All right. In that case, not seeing any further discussion. Thank you very much.
Valid discussion points.
Thank you.
The special town warrant review changes, again, we keep this on for any discussion, and I'd invite anyone from the audience, if they had any further discussion or comments or concerns from the eight warrant articles that are going forward. And I know some of us have been going back and forth to the advisory committee, but as of now, no changes since the last time, and everything's on track.
The one thing I will say that, is that we have officially posted it on the website so anyone can see it tonight. It's still in draft form. Officially, the board will sign this document, provided you feel it's acceptable at your next meeting, which will be on the 26th.
Okay. Are you sure we haven't signed it already?
Yeah, I don't think, we don't think we have.
Because I thought in order for it to get to the, we approved it.
You approved it.
Went to the advisory committee, but it didn't have our signatures.
Passed it on to the committee, right, for review.
Okay, we haven't signed it?
We haven't.
Okay. Very good. And if anyone at home, obviously, it is on the website, but toggle or click on to the advisory committee section, and there, all the meetings are posted, and the different items are scheduled on there, so. Any questions on any of the warrant articles? Another meeting tomorrow night. Next item, actually, combine these, the town manager update and the assistant town manager update, if you want to run with this.
Sure, just a number, a lot of, it's heavy, heavy meeting season, actually, in case everybody noticed. Just about every night of the week, it seems. But the audit committee met last night, first time in seven years that the committee met, I guess. So, but it was actually a very good meeting. We had the committee reformed as of last night. Primary purpose is to, is to, is to start looking at formatting, formatting financial policies that we can actually use in our attempt to try and increase or improve our bond rating. That was one thing, that one thing that standard employees indicated, that they'd like to see our policies in writing. So that committee is working on getting that done, and they'll have that hopefully completed by April, so in time for the next time we go up the board. The housing trust committee met tonight for the first time, so I'm glad you, I know you were anxious to hear that happen, so, so we actually, and John attended tonight, so I had the first meeting. So we're gonna be meeting again probably in another couple of weeks to try and get, we're trying to get some professional assistance to help guide us in the process.
Covered a lot of ground in forty-five minutes.
We did, actually. Actually, there was a lot of stuff to talk, discuss, so it was good, it was a good meeting, and good interest and good discussion around the table. The CIP meeting met last week. That was to cover three items. One was the water department article, that's on the special town meeting warrant, and there was a police vehicle purchase that the chief made, as well as a, and then, of course, the town hall project that was on the town meeting warrant for the special town meeting in February. So those items were discussed, and were recommended by, all three items were recommended for approval by the, by the committee. I want to say, budget meetings are underway in our office right now. We're also meeting with the AdCom on a regular basis. We met, we have another meeting scheduled for tomorrow night, and I know that there is a couple, there's more discussion on one of the articles for town meeting for the child safety committee, child sexual awareness committee. And then, and also, I want to congratulate the fundraising committee for the flagpole, so they're meeting their goal, so, and I'm told that the, one of the last major payments was, was made by the Patagonism Patriotism, so appreciative of that. And then Thursday night, we have another meeting scheduled, which will be for the municipal conversion meeting for, and this board, this board's required to hold prior to the closing of the sale of the property, for both the fire station and the funeral home. So at that point, you'll be receiving information from the prospective buyers of the property as to what their plans are for the redevelopment of that process. So that was, that's scheduled for 6:30, prior to the planning board meeting, that will also be held in the same room.
Bill, I had sent you some questions.
You did.
Did you get answers to those questions?
Yeah, I'm actually, I've given those, that information to town council. Town council's actually gonna be, have answers to me for that by tomorrow on that information.
Also, can you get information that the auctioneer had given to the prospective vendors, exactly what he told them, what they understood
Yeah.
to be the expectations of the town?
Well, it's all in writing. They actually announced it prior to the sale itself.
Can we get a copy of that?
Oh, sure. Yeah. That was read, that was read right into the record.
Okay. Well, I wasn't, I wasn't at the auction.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, it was a very lengthy document. It's actually the purchase and sale agreement, which actually describes the whole process.
But can that be sent to us electronically, so we can...
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, we, I believe I can send that to you today, tomorrow rather.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then, and also, there was additional information on the website as well, that that was just, we got zoning statements, things of that nature too, so a lot of information was disclosed. And I think, I think that's it for me, for my report. Mary Beth?
Mine is brief. Contract negotiations continue. We're trying to wrap up the police contract. We're very, very close in time for the warrant article to be reviewed and for this board to look at the contract. We're not there yet, but we think we will be. And we've also begun negotiations on all the rest, next groups. So dispatchers and DPW negotiations have started for the next fiscal year. Also, recruitment efforts are underway. We've been very, very busy with, we're interviewing payroll coordinators to fill a vacancy, as well as public safety dispatchers right now. We're in that process. We're also recruiting for two DPW positions because of, one was a promotion and one was a retirement. So those are underway as well. So we've been really busy. Also, personnel wage board is gonna start the meetings up again for the year on January 20th, and that's in preparation for a warrant article at annual town meeting regarding the personnel bylaw and some new policies. So been working on a lot of HR stuff and making some progress.
Lots going on.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Thank you both. Just two quick items, touching on two things that you brought up, Bill, the CIP. I received an email from, traditionally, the chairman of the board of selectmen is on the CIP, and I think the email went out to John Slubek at the advisory committee, and he accepted for the advisory. I had asked, just so you know, I had asked Ginny to represent the board of selectmen on the CIP. I've been on it for a number of years, and I just felt that it was good to get a fresh set of eyes and different perspective, looking at stuff. So I think Ginny accepted. Did you go to, you went to that meeting?
Yes, she did.
So we have to appoint her, I believe, before she votes on it, correct? I don't think that's been in the packet yet, to appoint Ginny.
No, it was on hold pending. She had one back in May.
Okay.
But then it was put on hold to determine who was gonna do it.
Okay.
If it was gonna be you, or if it was gonna be Ginny.
Okay.
And she never got sworn in, but we do have one made out for her.
Okay, so if we could, I guess, put that in the next packet? If that's not gonna hold up anything, do you have any meetings at the next, within the next two that she would have to vote on something?
No, we're all good now. I mean, we're all set.
All right, so we'll put that on the next, and we'll appoint her if the, if that's, the board sees fit.
Yeah, we, she was able to attend the meeting and take all the information in, so...
She's good at that. Better than me at the CIP. And the other item, just so you know, I will not attend Thursday's meeting. I don't have a conflict, but it's probably a perceived conflict, because one of my offices is in the building that the owner of the fire station owns, so, which leaves Thursday with a board of four people, so just be cognizant of that. And that vote's needed before they close, so if it's a two-two vote, try to work it out so it's not a two-two vote. But, and if you have any, any questions or you want me inside, I can send something to the board if you want my opinion on that.
Bill, is Mr. Costello gonna be at the meeting?
I can have him here. He was, I hadn't planned on, but I certainly can.
Do you guys know him, though? I think it'd be good to have town council.
Well, actually, there's two council.
Given the fact that we've never been through this, and I think, just so that we can navigate the waters if we have to, with some guidance.
There is, Jim Capola is...
I was gonna say, there's two councils on this.
He's the attorney that handles the actual transaction.
Right.
On behalf of the town, you know, he handles, he does all the legal work as far as the D and all that, all the things that get done at that level.
From the, from his office?
Yeah.
From Costello's office?
No, 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 he's from the, he's special counsel to the, to the town, to the treasurer, collector in the finance department, handling this whole...
So he would be the council to represent this, because he was at the closing as, not the closing, he was at the auction as well and prepared the documents.
Right, so the question is, is, does town count, but I think the question, are you referring to the question about whether or not the, whether the town council can weigh in on the question of the, of the bylaws, of the application of this law?
I just...
This bylaw, zoning bylaw?
Well, I think there's gonna be questions about...
What you can and can't do.
What you can and can't do.
Yeah, I'm looking for guidance on the depth and breadth of municipal conversion, so that we stay within the bounds.
It was interesting, I have spoken to...
Is the special counsel really financial, or is he more...
Oh, he's strictly the financial. He stands strictly, strictly D.
I think we need, I think we need, not, well, the financial is nice, but I think what we need is someone who can interpret the municipal conversion bylaw for us.
It is interesting, I will note, that town council, I've never seen one of these in thirty years. That's not, that a bylaw of this nature, I've never seen one.
Well, I asked Paige a few weeks ago, and she said she was familiar with it.
I've never seen one.
Can we get a copy of the parameters of this?
Yeah, it's in, it's in the zoning bylaws, so it's, you can probably click on it to your, it's on your webpage.
But just as far as, you know, certain other case law that's taking place, if we started heading to the boundaries, they can, we can get drawn back. Honestly, I think the guidance is...
I don't know if there's any case law on this, to be honest.
Well, I looked online to see, you know, if other committees have done this.
So we're really charting new territory.
New territory completely. This is a new one.
And also, will the planning board and the asset review committee and people be there?
Asset review committee has plans to attend, as well as the planning board. Planning board's gonna be here, because I think they're gonna be here for their meeting anyways. They have a meeting at 7:00.
Yeah, and it's gonna be fairly good representation from the asset review committee.
Right. That's it.
Okay, sorry, I have to miss this one.
I know. Lucky you.
No, I'm serious, I mean, it's a, it's a unique process. I'd like to see it.
It is a unique process.
I think it's important, we just wanted...
Oh, no, I agree.
Do the, do the right thing by all participants.
Yeah, no, I mean, look, this property's sat there for a long time, there's a lot of, I mean, the eyes are on it to make sure it's done the right way, so.
Exactly.
No, no problem with bringing counsel and having a robust discussion. Okay, next on the vehicle use policy, and I think this is...
You have this, it's a sixteen-page policy in your packet. I think that it's been vetted by this group a couple of times with some really good questions and edits. It has been circulated to, council has looked at this, the department head group, the operational group, and users of town vehicles. So the policy is here for your adoption. As policies get adopted, we're hoping to include them in a policy manual, rather than, you know, as we go forward and change the personnel bylaw to a real bylaw and have a town policy manual, this will be incorporated in that.
Yeah, there is a, there is a policy manual. It's on hold. Don't know the last time it was opened, but it's there.
Yeah, we're looking to, we're looking at, one by one, looking at policies. That's what Personnel Wage Board's been looking at, going through it, and we have HR council that's helping us with it, so.
Has, this is consistent with Maya?
This is Maya's template sample policy. In fact, I think...
With our additions and changes?
Yeah, we took, we took our old policy, which is about a four-pager, and it put it in with this, and then we've presented it to our loss control group, which Maya has representative on there. And in fact, I think we can, once it's adopted, we can submit it and get Maya reward credit for doing this, for updating it. We've had the chance to unfortunately apply this this past week. We had an employee who had a damaged vehicle, and we were able to turn to the policy and say, you know, what do we do to, how do we handle it? So it's already been helpful to us. You know, no policy is good until you actually have to apply it, and it worked, so.
Do you want to make a motion to adopt?
Yeah, just one question first. All the people that this affects, they've all seen it, agree with it, I know I probably asked you that the last time, too, in the draft.
Yeah, we've circulated it to the department heads, to the users of town vehicles, to our operations group. In fact, we've been floating this around for quite a long time. We, one of the first edits we had was from Sharon Watson on it. So we're just going through the file today, looking at everyone's comments. Finance director gave us comments, so we've been vetting it through as many groups as we can, as well as Personnel Wage Board and our loss control group.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion, then, we approve and adopt the vehicle use policy.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion carries five-zero.
Thanks for all the hard work on it.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good to check that one off.
I don't know how this happened, but we're ahead by twenty minutes.
Nice. Keep it going, Ginny.
Okay. Chief O'Leary's here, it's gonna come to a screeching halt now. The constable policy, Chief, would you like to come up to the table? You're on the agenda with Mary Beth on this. Okay, so in our packet, there's the policy of appointment of constables, and in it, it's somewhat color-coded. I think those are a lot of the changes or suggestions that we've had in the last couple meetings on this.
So the last time this was brought to the board by the chief, there was some discussion on, you know, we had, we had looked at this, reviewed other towns' policies, chief put, put this together. We, we met a couple of times, and the board asked us to relook at some of the inconsistencies between the application and the actual policy. So we've done that now, and the policy statement, you'll see an edit in color, that the board shall appoint not less than ten people to constables. And on page two, their residency should be in or proximity to Foxborough. So that's now consistent throughout the entire instructions, the policy document, and the application. This application and information was sent out to all our current constables that we have listed for the town. The chief is constantly reappointed as a constable, and the, with the exception of three people from our, four people from our former list did not reapply. But I have a list today, if, I don't know if we have on the agenda for you to appoint the actual constables today, is that...
No, just to approve the policy.
To look at the policy. Okay, so we'll have that for you next time, to, to look at the constables. We, right now, we will have nine to appoint, so if anybody out there was either a former constable and wants to get their application in, or if anyone's interested, we would still be able to entertain applications to present to you. They get recommended, approved by the chief and recommended to the board, so.
Especially where the, the board will hopefully take action within the next two weeks, because some people's appointments have expired in the time period since we started discussing this in the fall. If it could be moved on next week, people still have time, if they got an application to us, that I could do the background investigation and be able to add them to fill a potential vacancy that we would have.
Okay. Could I bother you just to, could you just give a brief summary of what a constable does? Who's, generally, who's eligible to apply for it?
Well, the primary purpose is to serve civil notice on different residency and/or businesses that are here in Foxborough and have a legal address here. Many of it has to do with civil litigation issues, potentially divorce papers, and other types of, minor type of court orders that are a result of civil action. And the regulations, which we had not had in the past, we were just going on state law, it spells out their duties in a particular nature, and also limits some of the legal action that they would take. From time to time, state law does allow constables appointed in very restricted areas. If necessary, they could make an arrest, but we've tried to limit that by the wording of our policy. And all the time that I've been in office, I think there was only one constable from some other community that actually ended up arresting somebody that was trying to flee with a car that was trying to be re... ended up arresting somebody that was trying to flee with a car that was trying to be repossessed, uh, we assisted the constable, but he handled bringing the person to the dead of court.
Okay, so if our next, uh, next meeting will be on January twenty-sixth, um, do you have that complete list, maybe I'll supplement it with anyone that wants to join?
We have a list that we'll present to you on that, on that date, um, we will, if the board approves the policy tonight, we'll have it on our website, so the instructions, the application, the core reform, anything somebody would need to apply will be on our website.
Okay.
I just had a question, there are, um, two tiers of bonding?
Yes, there are.
And do we have a, um, how do we keep track of the tiers that the people are, are in, is it?
They, they would demonstrate, uh, to the town clerk that they have the necessary bonding in place, uh, they would go to a, uh, agency that does bonding and submit a fee to get a particular level, and the level that they get depends on the nature of the paperwork they're going to serve, and from what I have seen, uh, many of the people have the more extensive bonding level, so they can serve a greater variety of papers.
But do we have like a, a copy of that for their file, or?
Uh, the town clerk would manage that.
We can add that to the spreadsheet, uh, level of bonding could be a.
Add it to a spreadsheet.
It could be, we could add that to this.
Mary Beth, are the current applicants or incumbents, are they all in good standing relative to the town with, uh, uh, payments and fees?
Um, at this point, um, we only have one with a reported, uh, that was one of the reasons for redoing, um, we needed to do a reminder to these folks that in order to be appointed as a constable, you needed to have a reporting process, so that's spelled out in the new regulations, um, and anyone you reappoint will need to complete the reporting.
Okay, so we're only looking forward, we're not looking back, okay, fine.
I only have on record one person filed a report of fourteen on the list.
Okay, so, so next, next time around, I'll ask the same question.
Yeah, exactly.
We have a column.
If I could, uh, they're required by law to file a report this coming April for any work done by them during two thousand fifteen, uh, and that would be a, a good way of seeing, you know, what is being done, uh, by each of the constables and, you know, the expectation that if they are doing work on a community, uh, they have an obligation to pay the town a percentage, uh, that's spelled out by the state law of the work that they've completed.
So having that, one of the catalysts why we went in this direction, back in April of two thousand fourteen, wasn't that law in effect as well?
It was, and.
And just nobody did it?
No one complied because we didn't really spell it out in our regulations, uh, and I think that now that it has been spelled out, I would have an expectation, those that are still active constables serving papers, uh, would have to file the necessary financial report.
We'll keep that in, we'll ask that later.
Yeah, I'll be honest, it's just a little unsettling where money's due to the town, it was a law, you would expect the constables to understand that and pay their fair share of what it did.
Of course, the law.
Well, they're supposed to be upstanding and of good moral character, that's part of the requirement.
One thought I have on that point though is the fact that where they do rep- provide a state, they're required to file a state report now, uh, in April, one of the things we could require is that you get a copy of the state report along with a local report indicating all the activity they've done here in Foxborough, so it'd be like an addendum to the report.
Correct. Would it be out of the realm to appoint them, the, the, the people that are getting reappointed to ask for that report for last year?
That's a good idea.
Well, no, I mean, that's. They're not required to even submit it until April, so.
No, no, I'm talking about the, the April, the report that was due April two thousand fourteen.
Two thousand, I don't think, I think the new requirements with this year, right, the two thousand, the state law?
They have to report for two thousand fifteen by April of sixteen.
Right.
And if there was work done in the community, there should have been a report, although we didn't have a regulation, reports should have gone to the town clerk.
But that's, but that's the town regulation, but doesn't the state require?
No, but the state law requires they do the report.
Did, did it require it in fourteen or fifteen?
It was state law.
It was, so in other words, Jim, your question is, should there be a report from, um, the calendar year fourteen that was submitted in April of fifteen?
If, yeah, if they work for the town in that calendar year to get reappointed, provide the report.
Yeah, that's a fair request.
And see where that goes, it's, it's bought, to be hon- it just bothers them that it's a state requirement by a constable, and regardless if we enforce it or not, because it wasn't in our regulations, it shouldn't be an excuse not to provide the report to the state and copy the town.
Right.
So is that reporting requirement in this policy now, or does this policy need to be tweaked again?
No, it's in there.
No, it's in there under fees.
So where it's already in the regulation, if the, I forget, was a motion made yet, no?
Not yet, no.
So the motion, we could still vote to approve this, but at the, um, at, at the next meeting when we get the list, make a note that a requirement that, that report has to be subject to, um, being submitted before they get appointed, or at the time of, with their application or whatever.
So you want to require that they provide a copy of the report filed with the state prior to an appointment?
Uh, would it be helpful that a letter goes out to the pending appointments and reappointments this week, so that?
To provide it with their application, sure, yeah.
That they have that time, opportunity.
Absolutely, sure.
To make good.
By constable or by regular mail?
I'm not going to serve.
All the irony.
If they, if they actually do owe us money, why wouldn't we collect the money for them?
Well, let's try the honor system with the application and see what we get with it, um, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve and adopt the new constable policy.
And I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, motion carries five zero.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Okay, before we go into executive session for the, um, two December executive meeting minutes approval, we have seven action items. And just so you know, packet, one of the action items, the Friends of the Flag Pole is updated tonight with a new list, so.
All right, so, uh, article, the first one is, um, Board Selectment approving Selectment Meeting Minutes from November third, two thousand fifteen, December fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, and December twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen.
Okay, can we do these separately?
Sure. We'll start with November third, anybody have any, uh, changes, tweaks, issues?
I'll just make the motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve November third, Selectment's meeting minutes.
And I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, discussion on the November third.
All good.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Motion carries five zero, for the thirty-nine pages of notes.
Flawlessly typed. I'd like to make a motion that we approve December fifteenth, two thousand fifteen.
I'll second that.
For the Selectment's meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, and a discussion on the December fifteenth notes, all those in favor? Motion carries five zero, and before the motion's made, I'm going to make a recommendation to hold the December twenty-ninth, uh, meeting minutes because that has to deal with the Hibachi, uh, I'm sorry, I keep saying Saga. Where it's under appeal right now, I want to, it's lengthy, that, another twenty-six pages, so I want to take a second look at that.
All right, that's good, I'll make a motion that we hold the December twenty-ninth.
Just ignore action.
Yeah, it's noted, yeah. Okay, item two.
All right, um, Council on Aging, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the appointment of Janet O'Neill to fulfill Vivian Pitt's term expiring May first, two thousand and sixteen, I'll second that and thank you, Janet, for volunteering.
Very much so, motion made, seconded, further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, motion carries five zero.
Number three, Animal Control, I make a motion that we accept the gift donation of the amount of a hundred and seventy-six dollars from Eric Kieran then for adoption fee.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, motion carries five zero.
All right, number four, Agricultural Commission, make a motion that we reappoint Rosemary Smith to the Agricultural Commission expiring on twelve fourteen eighteen.
I'll second that, thank you, Rosemary.
Very much so, motion made, seconded, further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, motion carries five zero.
Uh, Council on Aging, I make a motion, we approve the gift donation of fifty dollars in memory of Renee Carter for use with Council on Aging programs for Mr. and Mrs. David Low.
And I'll second that with gratitude.
Again, thank you, uh, motion made, seconded, further discussion on the acceptance, all those in favor, motion carries five zero.
All right, number six, Friends of the Flag Pole, um.
That's the one that was updated.
Yep, I have it right here, um, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the remaining gifts, and I'm going to read, uh, the gifts, um, Albert and Joan Sosio, fifty dollars, Foxborough J.C.'s, five hundred dollars, Kevin and Dwayne Weinfeld, a hundred dollars, Kevin and Diane, sorry, uh, Rosemary Smith, twenty-five dollars, William and Kathleen Ivets, fifty dollars, Sandra and Donald Norton, ten dollars, Sixteen Rock Hill Street, Nineteen Centennial Drive, twenty dollars, Eugene and Alice Cummings, a hundred dollars.
Ten dollars.
Ten dollars, I'm sorry, um, Earl and Sandra Brown, a hundred dollars, Philip and Tracy Costa, twenty-five dollars, LBP Solutions, a thousand dollars, Historical Commission Donation Jar, fourteen dollars and thirty-one cents, We Pay GoFundMe, forty, a hundred and forty dollars, Another GoFundMe for forty dollars, Comey's Cleaner Donation Jar, seventy-one twenty-five, Spoodles Donation Jar, seven dollars and sixty-seven cents, and the Partners in Patriotism Fund, Bringing Us Over the Top, for twelve thousand dollars. So the grand total of all donations, um, to date into the town is forty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and ninety cents.
And I'll second that, and I just wanted to thank everyone that's participated, it's quite a list, and it's quite a community project, and I can't wait to see the new flagpole.
Sorry, sorry, we've got a meeting scheduled this week, right?
Yeah, Thursday morning, we're meeting with the DPW Director, Roger Hill, with one of the vendors, um, out of Rhode Island, to look at the poll, look at the base, um, trying to get quotes for, um, approval, construction, and then have everything ready in May for, um, Memorial Day, and because of the winter, if it doesn't work, it's definitely Founder's Day, but, um, we're really shooting for Memorial Day to have that ceremony there with, um, turn and see the new flagpole.
So Chief, can I just put a shout out to the, uh, the facilities folks who actually did a good job of actually fixing all the lighting around the common, so everything's operational once again, and, uh, there was a couple of lights that were out for a long time, and they, they managed to get those all fixed, and so, I know one person was particularly happy to see all those lights back on, and I, I myself am happy to join in that, in that, in praise of that work, that's like, really, come on, nice.
Yeah, I think, um, yeah, I mean, Jack Letzman, it, I want to say Pet Project, but this is more than his Pet Project, this is his, his soul out there, and I know he was concerned about the lights and that whole process, and a, and a, he puts his heart into this, and, and, you know, the, the forty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty raised by the community, um, plus the donations in municipal, it's, it's a nice partnership to have, and, and I think a lot of people, and I was just joking with Chris before when this started, I, I was doubtful that, you know, that whole sentiment would catch on, and I was told that it would, and it, and it did, so.
Yeah, you were doubtful that we would raise it in the short of a time, and I.
There's, there's a lot going on, and you ask people for money without the, the passion behind it, it was going to be hard to do, but, um, it's a great committee and it's an exciting project.
Look at that list, too, so many different walks of life donated to this, businesses and individuals and well-to-do individuals and people that can only afford a little, and it's just, it's a great testament to what the flag means and what it means in Foxborough.
Well, is it to see the seven-dollar donation jar and, and then the twelve-thousand-dollar donation, of course, every one of them are just as important. And, um, we, we, while we appreciate the, the, the major donations, we also know that those little ones were just as equally important in, in share and the, and the excitement of that new, of that new.
And one of the, um, committee members had their kids at Walgreens on a table and, uh, for a rainy day, and, and, you know, and, and look at the J.C.'s, they gave five hundred, and that came from greeting cards that they had made up, so, you know, if you wanted to buy greeting cards with the common and things around the town, I think it was ten dollars a box to make up five hundred dollars, a lot of work that went into that, so.
Mr. Chairman, may, um, may I make a suggestion that the, the group that puts together the town report consider using the photo of the thank you sign with the flag as the cover of the annual report? You know, the, the picture of the, um.
We did it.
Yeah, but we did it.
At the beginning, yeah.
Because that really symbolizes the, um, a community effort.
Well, there were two things where, where actually where we were struggling with on, on the decision was, uh, the new, the soldier came back this year too, and that was a nice, nice picture that we thought we would, but I think we're going to do a story on that, Jack actually agreed to write that story on that, for the, for the inside of the, of the report.
Maybe you could do both or something.
Maybe you could do both.
Well, Jack's involved in both of them, so maybe, uh.
Yeah.
No, that's, that's a good suggestion, but, uh.
Because I thought that was, when I went around that common the first time and I saw it, I thought that was.
That's cool.
I thought that was just a fabulous photo, you know, photo op.
Yeah, and it came out well.
Yeah.
So that's a good, good thought, so.
Okay, so, thank you, so that's, that's it for the.
It was made, seconded, well enough.
Oh, okay, uh, motion made, seconded, further discussion, all those in favor of the acceptance, thank you very much, uh, motion carries five zero.
All right, number seven, New England Patriots Charitable Foundation, uh, like to make a motion that we approve two one-day all alcohol licenses on January sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen, from two PM to four thirty-five PM at the Empower Field House Hospitality Suite at Patriots Game, and, uh, the second one is for, um, January twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen, from twelve thirty to three oh five, Empower Field House Hospitality Suite, contingent on the Patriots making the AFC Championship game.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, seconded, further discussion on the two licenses requests, seeing none, all those in favor, motion carries five zero, and good luck this weekend with, uh, the Saturday afternoon game.
Last thing, last thing I should say, the cold Patriots.
Yeah, so.
Hopefully they win this weekend.
It's going to be a miserable, rainy, cold day, but.
Lousy day, but hopefully we play well enough in the bad, in the bad weather from what I've seen in the past, so.
All right, that concludes the, uh, regular items, uh, all those will close the hearing, um, all those in favor of going into executive session, raise your hand.
Well, I'm just, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, sure, yep.
I'd like to.
Sure, yep, the only thing was if you could just introduce yourself for the record, yep.
Uh, bearadu now, Foxborough reporter, I just want to, uh, clarify a few things before we get out, uh, first, uh, the gentleman, I apologize for being late, the snow, I nearly flew, nearly, so, what's the word, uh, spun out, so, I was going slowly, so, everyone be careful, uh, the gentleman who did public comment, what was his name, Mike Mann?
Graham Solomon.
Yeah. Graham Solomon, and he is the manager or owner of what, uh?
Tavallinos.
Tavallinos, yeah, and I think he's also involved in Foxborough Cares as a, as a leader there, or just a?
Um, his, his partner.
Okay.
Tom Petruna's the, uh, Vice President.
Okay.
Excellent, so that'd be Graham Sullivan, you said?
Solomon.
Solomon, Solomon, excellent, um, and did, did I just understand it correctly that you guys approved the final funds for the Foxborough Flag Pole, so now it's all set and I should give Jack a call tomorrow?
Yeah, the, um, we had a fifty thousand dollar estimate, um, so a certain percentage was donated or contributed by the town, DPW, the, the labor and and some of the materials around the plaza, the remaining, the majority of the funds were privately donated, so what we did tonight was we, we've had a tabulation every meeting, and it's come up to forty-one thousand, so, um, we formally accepted the donations, so they, when they, once we accept them, then they go into the town fund for the flagpole.
Excellent, so you don't need to ta- take any more, more donations now, then?
You can still donate there if you'd like.
Yeah, we, uh, the, the estimate is, is an estimate, if, obviously if we go over, then we'll be in, we'll, we'll need it, um, but I'm pretty comfortable that we should have it, and never want to ask for more than what we need.
Excellent, so you have, you have estimated fifty and you have forty-one now.
Correct.
And so that's enough of the money that you're comfortable meeting. And so, that's enough of the money that you're comfortable meeting with, with a, with a vendor?
To get the job, yeah. The installation, and fixing the plaza, and the flower planting bed, and all that stuff around it.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Yep.
Yep, that's about every, did anybody else speak in public, in the, in the public comment area before I came in?
No, it was just that one gentleman.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, well, thank you much.
Okay, drive safe. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of going into executive session? Roll call.
Yes.
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 Ginny and Chairman says yes, so we'll see you in two weeks. That concludes-